Okay, this isn't related to the, this isn't related to the certification.
No.
So.
We'll start the meeting with the pledge of police. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ryan, would you care to make some prayers?
Lord, thank you for this time we can get together as a community, made the decisions we've made today. Be pleasing to you in accordance to your will. Thank you for blessing us with all that we have in our lives. Yes, that you should just be with us as everyone departs from this location. Guess this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you.
Glory, everyone. I'm gonna hit your microphone. Greg, would you hit that microphone button, please? Thank you. Excuse me. All right, we're gonna start with the approval of minutes. You guys have had a chance to look at those. Everybody's good, okay? Ask for a motion to approve the minutes for May the fifteenth, 2024.
I make that motion to approve the minutes for May fifteen, twenty twenty four.
I have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor? Aye. Everybody bear with me, I have got about three weeks' worth of paperwork up here, so it's gonna take me a while to sort through it sometimes. In the matter of claims and payroll, find that sheet. We have a total of claims and payroll, again, this is a three-way process, one million, nine hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents. We have two payrolls, it's six hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Regular claims, five hundred and fifteen thousand, one ninety-eight and ninety-one cents. And out-of-cycle claims, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred, excuse me, five hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents. For a total, again, of one million, nine hundred and ten thousand, nine seventy-four and sixty-six cents. The large amount in out-of-cycle claims is insurance money that has been given to us by our insurance company to repair all the roofs. There's about six hundred thousand of that out-of-cycle that's part of that insurance claim, so. Anyway, do I hear a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve total payroll and claims of one million, nine hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four, sixty-six.
Have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I'll try to work these out-of-cycles through as the meeting goes. Sheila, you have a financial report for us this morning? Or an update?
Yes, you have the blue copies in front of you, which is your monthly pressures report, bank report. If you have any questions, you can show them, not one. Normally when we give you guys your monthly reports, we do it for the month that we're in. Therefore, the first ones that I sent you on that ended May the thirty-first was in the general fund, three million and eighty-eight thousand dollars. However, after the million dollars of claims that you approved today, your county general fund is down to two point eight million dollars. Settlement will go in late today or tomorrow as far as what goes in May, but it's only one point eight to go back into the county general. So, several weeks in budgeting processes and working with departments and the council, we're really gonna have to keep an eye on that county general fund. Pretty much everybody else's funds look good. There were supplemental funds that came in to the departments that helped them out as far as where their cash balances are. I will say again, county highways are looking really good, have talked with DLG of them already, so a lot of it probably opened in their revenues and warrants in. So, again, just need to keep an eye on the county general fund and additional preparations and the flow of things going into budgeting.
Thank you. And I wanna, real quick, while we're touching on that, thank you for all the fun reports that you give me, for all the different departments that the commissioners deal with or I personally take a look at. And I do wanna thank Greg and his crew for getting his report in on time and very professional. Thank you. I'm gonna jump Steve up here, real quick, before I bring Matty up, just so I can take him five minutes and we'll get him back to work. We got buildings falling apart somewhere, I'm sure. Morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve. What I have is a proposal for, actually for the water treatment, but also for the boiler and chiller over here in the jails. Just to keep the water from going up inside the, you know, the lines. Since I've been, and this was actually kinda brought up with, or that they did the whole land security inspection. The gentleman, the inspector, he referred, you know, referred doing this because, and he wondered if we actually even had it. It seemed like we actually had a system at one time down there that is not even being used, so. Basically, for the jail, it's just a matter of some filters, that's why it's only like two thousand dollars. And here, they would have to set a tank and everything for the system and everything. And it's like eleven thousand, but that's just for the startup and everything. It looks like after that, yearly, you'd be like around a thousand dollars.
For maintenance agreement?
Yeah. And since it's so bad here, they'd be here like every month for the first year, and then hopefully quarterly after that.
And my term here, just to help you out here a little bit, Steve, we bring in HFI in the spring and the fall. We basically rent water in the summer and switch it over to Clyde Call in the wintertime. This will eliminate that process, I'm assuming, correct?
I think it all uses the same kind of deal.
Be the same year-round?
Yeah. And since I've been here, I know I've had to go through multiple air handler units, and they actually, there's a filter in there that gets clogged up, and that will probably eliminate that, too.
Since we spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on all this new heating and air conditioning system about four years ago, it's pretty important that we keep it maintained, so.
Spent a bunch down jail, too.
Yeah. So, Ryan, this would take care of the current jail as well?
Yeah, and of course, Tardon and the company, they were also, HFI also recorded meetings then, because HFI don't do that, so.
Right. Okay. Guys, any questions? Do you have money in your contract services line?
Yeah.
If there's no other questions, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve, Steve, to move forward with this company and this process to further the life of our heating and cooling system.
You made the motion?
Nope, I'm gonna ask for a motion. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor? Aye. Do you have an actual contract that needs signed or an agreement?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I could ask him if they, if we need one or whatever.
You move forward with it, you're good to go.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Steve.
All right, thanks.
Contract service at courthouse.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, Matty.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, you should have a, well, time clock proposal in front of you. That looks like now, looks like that.
I don't think I've seen that. Oh. This one?
Yes. No, that's not it. Anyways, so that proposal is for fifteen clocks. I went a little high on that, so I think that the maximum that we would need would be thirteen. But in my opinion, and Sheila's also, we think we should go with nine clocks. Just because the price for each clock is fourteen hundred dollars, and there is a thirty dollar maintenance fee per month per clock. I think it would be a little silly to have clocks in one-person departments or even a couple people in those departments. So, I was probably going to stick with either the mobile app or the desktop login for EMA extension. Probation was already approved for mobile. And then soil and water and the veterans office, just because those are really small.
You're not gonna do a time clock at all in the probation? Everyone there is going to do mobile?
Mobile and desktop logins. So, Natasha said that they are always in and out of the office, and they work really weird hours. And those are monitored, they can, they are, they have to have their location on so Natasha can monitor where they are when they clock in. And they have to be reviewed during payroll.
Okay. We'll have to discuss that with policy, because that'll affect how that gets written up. EMA.
And same with the sheriff deputies on that one, too.
Right, right.
So.
But they're still gonna need at the sheriff department an actual time swipe card for his office abilities.
Only at the jail.
Yes.
Yeah, there will be one clock at the jail, so.
In the old health building, you could get by with one there that would take care of EMA, maintenance, and veterans. And extension, if you wanted to use it there.
I don't, I'm not familiar with the location of the extension office.
Right across the street.
Is it, yeah, see, I mean, a person having to go across the street to clock in and then go over to their own building.
How many clothes do you have?
We have one full-time, and then we have two summer.
Okay.
So, and those ones wouldn't be mobile apps, those would be desktop logins, so they are, you still have to be in your office.
Desktop logins, we're gonna go card swipe.
For the ones that have the clocks, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
We'll have to discuss that. We decided as commissioners, we were gonna do card swipes at every location.
If you wanna do card swipes at every location, it will be thirteen clocks. The EMA and the veteran would share.
Yeah, we can consolidate some of them.
One, yeah, so I already consolidated that, and it would be a total of twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, it would be eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the clocks, twelve hundred dollars for the actual key cards, and then nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for shipping. And then the monthly maintenance fee for that would be three hundred and ninety dollars.
Let me ask this, if I might. When it comes to three people departments, old health building, I'm just asking a question. My mind, mobile app, using location, being able to monitor it, I believe is gonna be a lot cheaper than these machines.
Those, so, the mobile app and the ESS online login is free. It is included in the system already. So, the time clocks are the only additional charge.
So, in some of these cases, Gary, I think, as commissioners, we decided that Greg's department, for instance, would have the ability. They have a clock, they would have a swipe, and have the mobile ability, is that correct?
Greg will have that ability, his employees won't.
They could potentially be given that ability.
Isn't that what we discussed, Greg? If you get a call in, you could punch those people in when you call them out?
That is great. I actually spoke with Matty about this this morning, and.
You gotta have somebody that oversees and controls.
Exactly.
Like at the health building, everybody there comes to the office, they can punch, swipe a card. It's not an issue.
Okay.
The ESS online, which is what I would recommend for the extension office, the EMA, soil and water, and veteran, that is something that you have to log in on this network. It is like, it's only allowed to be logged in on this network, so they can't log in from home. So, that's, and that's what you log into your computer, that's not the mobile app. The mobile app, you can do anywhere.
So, that's a password-type login?
Mm-hmm, yeah. They get a badge number on there, and they log in with the badge and password. And they have to be doing that from their desktop. And even if they tried to log in on their phone with that, they can't, because it's not on this app. It has to be on this, I think it's IP address, I think, is what this would have to be. It has to be on this network.
I guess my concern was.
And that's what they're doing right now. Because we started using the system, so we all are using the desktop right now, which, while we're learning, we're not, I'm not using that to process payroll. But everybody is learning how to use the online system.
I know that all of our employees are very honest, but what stops them from giving a password to a fellow coworker and saying, "Hey, I'm gonna be twenty minutes late, punch me in"?
None of like our, it's really only at the courthouse that is doing this right now, and it's only those couple that would have those, and there are only maybe one single staff or maybe a couple people in there. So, I don't really think it'd be a big problem, and like I said, we could always change it after. If we see any kind of issues coming through with that, we can always order another time clock. But I think starting now.
That's the way we go here.
One single entry and exit.
Yep. I think that's what we discussed, but let's put it out on the table here.
I don't, I don't think that having one in each department makes any bit of a sense. When you come in, if, you know, you swipe and give it the timeframe factor prior, after, because you don't want ten people standing there. I thought one, I thought we decided one swipe for the courthouse.
That's what I thought we decided as well.
So, I'm a little, I'm a little.
One clock for the entire courthouse?
One swipe, or, yeah.
You could put two clocks in here if you want.
I think we should have four clocks in the courthouse, but it would be a badge swipe for the courthouse. The people inside the courthouse would not be using the online system. It would be a time clock. The only people that I was, like, bringing to you to consider not having a physical time clock is EMA, extension, probation, soil and water, and veteran.
Not actually having it?
Not having an actual physical time clock. They would be logging in on a computer desktop.
So, you go to the office every day, for the most part?
The only time of the conference or being called out.
So, he's already in there with veterans, so he can swipe a card, same as the rest of them. The sheriff department, highway department, probation would be the mobile access.
I think we're getting the mobile app confused with the desktop login. Desktop is different. So, there is a computer login, and then there is a phone login. The computer login has to be done from your desk. The mobile app can be done outside the office, but the computer cannot be.
So, what's the purpose of a desktop login versus a card swipe?
People can do it when they walk in, and I, the time clocks will help a lot of our offices who are busy on a regular basis, because if they have a line outside or from lunch or whatever, then they're like, you know, they start bombarding them as soon as they walk in the door. They don't have time to go to their desk and log in, they have to help the people that are standing right there. So, if they're able to just clock in on their way walking to their office, that's why the time clocks are helpful in that area.
Yeah, I think that they're necessary.
So, but for the small departments that aren't overrun like that on a regular basis, the login online for just those one or two people departments is cheaper, because they're fourteen hundred dollars a piece plus maintenance. If you're only having one person using it, that's silly to me. So, they can sit at their desk and log in, and then they're clocked in.
Unless we have buildings that have two or three offices in one building, then they can have a swipe, card swipe for everyone.
That's up to you. I was just bringing forth what the cheapest way to do it is, because they are expensive and they do have monthly fees.
Yeah, and I think we can get down to eight or nine of those.
So, my total was nine.
Okay. Go ahead, Sheila.
So, we think for the courthouse, I know we had originally had said four. We can always add clocks if we wanted to start out with two. Like everything else, there's a backup. We need that backup, if that's the only way to do it. And a lot of this is gonna go back to the department heads, again, which is that we're already using it, and you're gonna have to make sure that your staff is in a routine if they're doing their desktops and getting logged in and logged out. So, I think the card swipe is gonna be the better of that and not the desktop login for the courthouse or those that are stationary every day. But again, people start, some start from home, they go to different places, they go to the school, and I think that, even the health department out of this, too, and I think they might need some options as well for their cell phones and stuff, so I'd like for some of you to weigh in on that one, because again, some of them start from home, or they're going to the school before they go to their office and those different things. So, those variations, whether, you know, it's easy with card swipe to be able to say, "Okay, we're going by, we're signing in, you're not gonna get back to where you're going", or you're saving mileage for an employee coming all the way in and clocking in. So, I do think the mobile apps need to be available, and if they're part of the system already, then, and it's a checks and balances, and again, department heads are gonna have to step up and make sure that they're monitoring these and they're watching them as well. I think that's some of the reason we're in this mess that we've been talking about for four years that I've been sitting here, and.
Well, part of that, Sheila, and I agree with you a hundred percent. But if we go back to our cop time PTO, and I'm not jumping away from payroll, but that was department head's responsibility, and now we owe the county employees a half a million dollars if we can't pay it, this is gonna be the same thing. That's why that card swipe, to me, eliminates a whole bunch of that problem. And I'm not saying we don't need some of these other options, but I think that that's first and foremost.
In other words, you know, by them physically going, they're in, they can physically do it. It's not make-believe. Now, I will say, and that probably works for a majority of the people, but I wanna use Jack White as an instance. I can assure you, he's not always available to go directly to the office, or he's going to a meeting, or he's going somewhere else. I think in some cases, the mobile app should be an option.
Not saying that, I agree.
Yeah, so, on a normal day, goes into the morning, "Okay, I'm here to..." Oh, man, he's leaving from the house to go do something. He needs to have that ability to record that time.
Could you run a report on, you know, for a department on who's clocking in on what device? If it's a mobile login or a desktop?
I'm sure, I'm sure you can, I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sure you can, yeah.
Then it wouldn't, you'd know if somebody was using the app all the time.
I mean, you know if they're clocking in from the mobile app, because it is, it's GPS stamped. It shows you where they are when they clocked in. So, they can't clock in from the McDonald's drive-through line and get paid for that. So, but that's on the supervisor's responsibility to be making sure that they're working when they clock in, and you know, if they are, they need to be reviewing the GPS stamps and make sure that they're actually working. So, and that's only for some. A lot of, a lot of the employees won't be having access to the mobile app. That was only for really our emergency people and then probation, just because their schedules are so odd. They have to work nights sometimes.
And Christine's got some issues there, too.
I mean, I don't think we would use a lot of that. I could probably just seem like what Greg has, if John's on his way out, and he gets caught and he can't get back to the office, he wants to go home, then I could talk him out.
And I think.
But you need to have that authority, not the employees.
I think John was one that we have put on.
Would they bend those rules if you didn't have control of it?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's a case-by-case, I think that's a case-by-case basis, but I just think that we should start off with the nine and do the online system with like the computer login for some of those smaller departments and see how it goes. And we can always add more clocks, and if it's not working out in these smaller departments with the computer login, then I feel like we could order more clocks. But I feel like just starting out, we can see, because that's how they're learning anyways. And it's going well, and we really haven't had a ton of issues with it.
Well, is the full-blown, we're all signed up and ready to go? I got departments asking me.
Well, it's, it's live right now. We're, I have integrated the courthouse, so, and a couple small departments. We are working on them practicing using the online system, and once they get kinda in a rhythm of that, I will start moving those departments off the paper, because right now, we're doing a dual system. We're doing the online and we're doing the paper timesheets, just so that everybody can kinda make sure that we're checking it and making sure that it's working right. I have a few departments that are doing really well with it, and I will probably start moving them away from the paper altogether in the next two weeks or so. So, as far as the outside departments, I really don't have a timeline yet. I haven't done, I haven't processed payroll through the timekeeping system yet.
What is our holdup there for the?
It just takes time. I mean, I'm working as fast as I can with it, it just takes time. I mean, I only do payroll every two weeks, so I can't like do any, anything with it, like the processing part of it, unless I'm doing payroll. So, it's just, it takes time to learn it. And all of the other.
So, is Lauer this out, this third-party company, where Advanced Time or whatever they are, they're not coming in here? I know most of that's by Zoom or whatever. They're not physically coming in here and helping go out and set up these departments?
No, we've had Zoom meetings and.
Do they not do that?
No, well, they're, they're not local. They're like three or four hours away.
I don't care whether we're paying them for a service.
Again, they had talked about doing a department head meeting, and there's lots of things originally coming in, in that part.
I think we need to get there.
If the Zoom is, is working, and you know, and I haven't.
We've only had one so far, and we have the, I have a copy of the video that I've shared with all the departments so that they can review it. So, it just takes time, I mean, it's not a quick thing, and it's a very large system to learn.
And we need a policy.
Yeah, he's got that down, we're gonna work on that. I think that it's important, before we move forward with this, is you send each of the commissioners a copy of your locations of where you want these time card swipes. That is most important to us. We can get by with two in the courthouse, and then we'll see where those other locations are at, and then we'll get back with you on it.
Well, she has, she has reduced the number greatly.
Yeah.
Fifteen.
I recommend a minimum of three in the courthouse. I was, I would really recommend four, but I'd say three minimum in the courthouse, one on each floor, just because people don't always leave for lunch, and so people in their office don't wanna walk all the way to the first floor to clock out. So, I recommend a minimum of three, but I would say four and have two on the first floor, just because there will be an influx of people coming in at the beginning of the day or at the end of the day, trying to clock out all at the same time.
We can always add, though, right?
Yes, we can.
Look, send us the list, we'll go through it, we'll make that decision.
We'll look at your recommendation, but I really appreciate the fact that you trimmed the fat out of this.
Yeah.
And that's important, so you're taking a good look at it from a financial standpoint, so.
And Polly, another thing since you're sitting here, we'll bring you involved in this conversation. This agreement was sixty-some thousand dollars, obviously it didn't include this, so this is gonna have to come back to the council for an additional appropriation, pay for the time clocks and the card swipes and those type of things, so. Those are cards, just like we're using now to get in and out of the courthouse, basically. I know they're not the exact same.
They're badge cards, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And they're four dollars a piece.
Get us the information of the locations that need time card or card swipes. The locations. The locations that you're talking about, apps that's gonna use the mobile app. That way we can put this all together. Okay?
Okay.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you, Maddie. Appreciate it.
Sheila, go ahead.
So to expedite things, again, if we gotta go to the council on Monday and ask for more money, it'll be the July meeting. Can I at least ask permission to advertise the maps that she had and then when you guys will open the list down? Then then that would be what would be approved at their July meeting because we would have final number by then. You guys have two more meetings before the council meeting in July that we'd be able to have an exact approved number. But at least get it on the books at the council meeting Monday night for an additional appropriation.
Yep.
If not, it's gonna be August before you can pay for these clocks.
Is there any way that we can come up with a number today? I mean, I was, I have a meeting with them this afternoon and it will take several weeks to get these clocks in. And I won't be able to really do a live system with everybody using only punching in and out until we get them.
If we're gonna advertise it till July anyway, it's not gonna matter. We can't, we can't give them a number until we get approval of the money.
Right, yeah.
So we can wait two more weeks to our next meeting. Just get us an email on this stuff as soon as possible. I still would like to see him come down and meet with department heads where they can actually sit in a room and comprehend it. That's my personal preference.
Would work if they would attend, but a lot of people don't attend the meetings, so.
I think in this particular situation, we can make that happen. This is pretty important.
I agree.
It's mandatory.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie.
Appreciate all your work on it. I know it is time consuming and a lot involved, so.
It is indeed.
I'll get back and find my agenda where it went to.
She had another wow.
Yes. I'm a little confused on this.
Okay, they agreed the way they're doing things and now they're submitting everything by email and electronic signature. They're just wanting this sign that we're agreeing to this hundred and forty-three thousand. The reason I sent it to you and the council was I didn't want to sign it and say, we're committing to doing this. And then the council say, well, we're not gonna do it. I'm not blaming the council. I just want to make sure both sides are okay with the hundred and forty-three thousand dollars before this is submitted because this is the agreement.
Right, and this is part of commissioner's budget. It's under contract services. Their contract in the past has been about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and then they throw in another ten thousand throughout the year when they come down for this, that, whatever. My my question is, as I look at this, we spent a hundred and twenty thousand last year. We added payroll of sixty-eight thousand. And the total on here is a hundred and forty-three. So they've combined something here. Don't know that I totally understand that because my my calculation should be about a hundred and eighty some thousand. So they dropped forty thousand off somewhere and it doesn't break that down.
I know there was the initial startup cost, which was more for the payroll system. So some of that dropped down.
And then it was fifteen thousand every year thereafter, plus the maintenance that Maddie's talking about.
We'll ask Andy to give us a complete breakdown on on the prices.
I I think it's important that we do. I mean, the hundred and forty-three is a deal by adding payroll based on that, but I want to make sure that everything's included in there because I've got to put this on a budget sheet and it needs to be right. Does that make sense? Again, I don't have any problems side of it, but I just want to make sure it's right and it's paid for.
Yeah, like you said, there's twenty thousand there somewhere.
Do you, just between me and you here real quick, this is eighty-two thousand here and last year was a hundred and twenty. That's where I'm confused at. I mean, I'm happy to save money, don't get me wrong. I just don't want us to then get a bill where twenty thousand short somewhere.
Or they're not gonna do something.
Do I?
Or they're not gonna do something.
Right, right. All right. Jail updates. The sheriff, Bill Snodgrass, Matt Miller, Polly and myself went to Missouri last week and checked out this particular jail here that's on the wall. Had a very nice trip, met with the architect engineers, the sheriff of Lawrence County, Missouri. They had nothing but high praise to discuss the jail and the process with Elavata. I think that the commissioners are ready to move forward in a direction as to approve Elavata as an architect design. I'm gonna let the sheriff jump in here real quick. I think he's, you and I've talked several times that he he's on board to move forward. Ryan, if you want to touch base on it real quick, your thought process and.
Yeah, we, so when we looked at this facility, I would say it's, it meets all of our needs. It does not meet all of our wants, but it meets all of our necessary items that we need to check. It is all ADA compliant, obviously, with the new construction, which we are miserably failing now. The design of them are much better than what we currently have. We had a quote come out last last week, I believe I sent you, for our cell doors of our of our jail. We have several several pods where we cannot lock any of the cells up. I mean, we can't lock inmates in the cells. They don't work. The quote we got was hundreds of thousands of dollars that would be a temporary fix on. And that's because the building is sinking in the ground. So it tears everything up and they don't make those parts anymore. This, we would, it would be designed different where we don't have to worry about doors sliding or functioning that way. They are hand. It is a, it is a simple design. It's not elaborate in any stretch of the imagination. Has a very small admin area, but it does put the sheriff's office under one roof instead of three different facilities like we are now. It is, it is very nice. It is a nice facility. It looks nice. It does not look like a jail. It looks more like a administrative offices. So appealing to the eye and not not a nice or, well, there's our penitentiary. It is, it is aesthetically pleasing. Yeah, I I was really pleased with seeing it and how it worked. We we would like to make some interior changes in the footprint to meet our needs. But our needs and Lawrence County Missouri's needs are two different beats. Their population's different, their their offices that they have and the way that their government works inside their office is completely different from ours. So some of the offices we simply would not need inside there. We would be able to eliminate walls and expand the training facility inside there once we take those walls out and we meet the needs of our training where we could actually train on site, not have to go find a location to train. It would also provide a place for public meetings such as this where when you do have a council meeting or something that's really heavily populated. A lot of people coming, it's a hot topic. We could have them there and not try to be cranny. Last meeting I sat out in the hallway of a meeting room, so it would serve multiple meetings.
And I have asked Ryan as far as the commissioner's side, because we are responsible for this building, to make sure that that gets put into this facility. And he's worked very diligently to move some walls and move some offices. So we can have that meeting room that will hold up to seventy-five, eighty people instead of what we have here today. We don't have a building or a room in the county that will hold more than this right here. So that, I appreciate that.
That would, that would probably never be seventy-five people to sit into a room and go there and meet. And the other thing that would allow us to do, which we don't get the opportunity now because we simply don't have a location, is we could be a host site for training, for law enforcement training, for other agencies to come to the sheriff's office. And we would receive money for that. So you would charge an agency, say, a hundred and fifty dollars per person for them to come and have training. And we would, we would get that money. We have no ability to do that now. We have no facility to do it. So we can't host or allow these departments to do those postings of training and reap a lot of benefits more than that pays for the training itself, the pace for future training, equipment fees. We have no means to do that other than taking out a general fund for appropriations and stuff when we have a cost that comes up. This would allow us that opportunity to do that and it wouldn't cost a taxpayer.
Right. And also, go ahead Bob, I'm sorry.
How many people do you want in prison?
This, this is, this would hold a hundred and then the holding facility here, the the holding cells along here are twenty more. So a total of a hundred and twenty, but the main pod system is a hundred. Don't count these because these are more like if you have someone who's need ADA compliant cell here or somebody who's violent and can't be in a normal pod, they'd go into a holding cell or someone who's detoxing. And those are all short windows, so.
So according to DOC, that staff would just be a hundred people. Eighty percent so you'd be at.
I would have a total of a hundred and twenty, so eighty percent of a hundred and twenty.
Oh, eighty percent of a hundred and twenty. That was other twenty counts.
They do count.
Okay.
They count for DOC, yes.
Ryan, did this include coroner and EMA?
No.
It does not. We've got a solution for that. Joe, once this facility's built, we have the old EMA, excuse me EMS building that has three garage doors, kitchen area, all kinds of room in there. So that facility would make a very nice facility for EMA and the coroner's office. They could put the cooler in there, park the vehicles inside, have all kinds of storage in the evidence room. That building has had a tremendous amount of money spent on it. My old sheriff Hobbs spent about forty thousand on it. We just spent another thirty thousand on the roof. So that would make an excellent building for that. And we, well, we we did talk about that, putting it on there, but we're trying to stay within that twenty-five million. So we already, we can consolidate two buildings into one building down there that's been totally redone, so.
I will say this structure right here, as it as it is right here. Lawrence County, Missouri got this entire structure, all of the soft costs included, like the refrigerators, the heating, cooling and all the light bulbs, the carpet. The furniture for inside that facility, they were out the doors twenty-three million for for everything. I don't think the loop are gonna need everything. I think we can utilize some of the stuff we currently have at those costs. There's no reason to throw my desk away. My desk is a perfectly good desk. I don't want another desk. I like my desk, so.
There's an extremely large kitchen in this facility as well and a good point was brought up. We have a natural disaster in the in the community. That facility is big enough with a refrigerator, freezer, kitchen area that we can feed the community out of that facility if need be. We do not have that now.
No, I, you know, also, this kitchen is designed for if you ever added on another pod in the future, you wouldn't have to build another kitchen because obviously, just like your house and my house, the kitchen and the bathroom are the most expensive rooms in your house, right? This kitchen's no different, but the kitchen's large enough that if you was to add another pod, you wouldn't have to build another kitchen. It can accommodate two pods. That is the great thing about this other struc- this structure as well is if twenty-five, thirty, forty years from now we have to add on because our population of inmates go up, it simply would come off of this indoor rec and then this pod system right here would attach right here. We would never have to do anybody out. It simply would just be added to the outside. Unlike our structure now, we can't build on our structure. So if we're planning for the future, we wouldn't have to revisit this, you know, twenty-five, thirty years from now and have to figure out food square one all over again, which is the most frustrating part.
Correct. And I also asked while we were there, how much land that particular structure has. It's not parking lot, not drives, any of that. Four acres is what that property's sitting on, that building right there. So obviously, what we have downtown wouldn't work. We are getting closer to the appraisals. I talked to Rich Fig last week. He's working on those. Hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have that information. As most of you know, or if you don't know, we're in the process of trying to do a land swap with Frank Rizzo, some of the county-owned property versus roughly ten acres out between the YMCA and the Walmart.
And maybe also what I was pointing out, the current property we're on, well, I know there's a lot of people who say, well, we already own the property. We need to do that property. It's two point two acres. That's a hundred foot east of through Duke. We cannot build under. And it also eliminates any future growth. If we ever had to put the second pod on, we could not do it on the property. It is not large enough. So then we would back, be back a square one thirty years from now saying, okay, we need to find land and build a new jail. That that is, that is ignorant. There is no reason to do that. You find a piece of land and you can have future growth so that you don't have to do it all over again, plus another twenty-five million. Or by that time, it would be way more than twenty-five million. It it's not, it doesn't make sense to do the tax, tax money that way. I mean, it's just sacred.
Yeah, no, we're looking.
There's a place for you to have improvements for expansion for the future so that you don't have to do this all over again.
Right. And and I think that the councils give us a firm twenty-five million. We, I've talked to Polly about that on the trip out and back. That's what this will be built to. They will design it to that price. So we we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Hopefully, everything goes well with the land. We're just shy of ten acres is what the county's looking at out there. So not only will there be growth for future jail expansion if needed down the road, if there's other possibilities for buildings for storage, whatever it is that we need, because right now the county does not have anything close to infrastructure. All of our land is outside where there is no water and sewer, so that's a problem.
Should I add a little bit more to you about the current side of the the Old Ale also? It's more than likely we'd not pass environmental study and also flood claims, probably the insurance would be ignored.
We would have to have flood insurance, which you, which is extremely expensive. We'd have to pay that every year forever.
If what I've been told.
We're a little grandfellow, so we have a little luxury now that we would not have with any facility.
You tear it down and from everything I've been told, with that fringe being increased, we would have to elevate this jail. Whatever we built on that site would have to be elevated, which is more expensive.
And that ground is seen. I said, you can see the footers in my jail. You should never see the footer and that's because the floor is sinking. I don't know, but I don't want to build something on cemented ground. I think that's that's stupid. If you build something on cemented ground, it's supposed to not have to have a vent to listen to. So it doesn't make sense to build a raft now. It used to be a big collar, I guess, before my, before my time. It was a co-op. It was a big collar. They got filled in. And I suppose it's sinkable. I don't know why that's a big collar. It's a sinkable. I had it before my time. But wherever the ground is not very inclusive for a heavy building.
Ryan, thank you. Appreciate you very much. County attorney's working with Elavata's attorney to get it like we want it. But we can go ahead and this morning and take a vote to move forward with the bringing on Elavata's architect firm for the jail project. So with that being said, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the Elavata's agreement for architect design for the new county jail.
I'll make that motion here.
Got a motion by Joel. Are you a second?
Sergeant.
It's taken by Bob. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This will be signed once everything is taken care of by the attorney. And he said so far, they've agreed to everything that he's requested, so.
One thing I just want to make sure gets on the record, I'm gonna get to the payment portion. This is a AIA standard form contract, so, but we're just tweaking it. Sorry, I'm trying to find this section. Also very. If you want to go on, come back to it.
Okay. We'll talk about code enforcement officer real quick. That's still in the process. Attorney's been working on some of that stuff. Susan's put some information together. We continue to get complaints. Bob got a call this week or last week about another situation of trash. I received an email from an individual taxpayer that has claimed she's going to call the news down, an exposure in county. going to call the, uh, news down, an exposure in county, I, I hope that that doesn't happen, but that's where we're at. This is a continued problem, and for us to be a good, clean, growing county, this is something that needs to be taken care of, so I'll leave it at that. Pending ordinances, you want me to skip that?
Um, yeah, I can do it right away.
Okay. Sheriff Department, did you have something else, Ryan?
You're requesting that, uh, one of our decommissioned V vehicles be traded for the, uh, for the cost of training, um, we have an offer through our canine, uh, the place where we get our canines trained, uh, that if we, uh, can provide them with a canine V vehicle, one of our old ones that, that is no longer in service, to keep on the property to help us with our training of deploying and, uh, kenneling dogs from a vehicle and deploying dogs from a vehicle for purpose of service, police service, um, they would eliminate all of our training costs for three years for all of our canines, um, there's, which is worth way more than what the cost of that vehicle, honestly, nobody wants our own canine vehicles, they smell really bad because they've had wet dogs in them for years, um, they're full of nasty hair, and, uh, and honestly, the, the kennel that's inside that vehicle will not fit another vehicle, those vehicles are, uh, the new models, those cages no longer fit, um, therefore, we're not losing anything, in fact, we're gaining, we're gonna, it's, it's, uh, about fifty-five hundred dollars of training, uh, for that, uh, for those three years, for those three officers, and giving them a vehicle that we were going to sell on auction for a couple thousand, we're, we're actually, I have the vendor, I have the year and, and everything, if you wanted the.
What we'll need to do, i- if we will need that, if you want to send that to Dana or Sheila, we'll have to put a ordinance or resolution together on that to transfer that vehicle, like we would a surplus, but it's going to another entity.
It would not have any markings on it, it would be only for the use on the, uh, the, for the canine place there where the training takes place, uh, common for canine, uh, but it would also, not, not only would it provide assistance with us, but lots of police departments throughout the entire state go there to have their canine trained, and they would have the benefit of using it just for us.
We go ahead and make a motion and approve that this morning, but as I said, we need to do the official paperwork, at the next meeting we can sign off on it, uh.
I'll make a motion, Gary, that we transfer one of sheriff's department's vehicles to canine training facility, once the appropriate paperwork's been mapped out.
Okay, got a motion by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hopefully the next meeting we'll have that all ready to go. Okay, Jack. How you doing today?
Just fine, you?
Yeah, doing all right.
Good. I have two things, I have the prolegation of the comprehensive emergency management plan that I provided you guys draft copies of, if there's any questions or any concerns.
Went through it, looks good. Do you do that all by yourself?
Yes, I do.
Lot of work.
Yes, you know, you know more than get it complete and then somebody switches jobs, and, so there's already a change that I need to make after the next person's appointed, so, uh, but yeah, I'd ask for your, uh, your signature on the prolegation page for the two thousand twenty-four, uh, comprehensive emergency management plan.
Yeah, I went through it the last couple days, looks pretty good. Do I hear a motion to approve signature, uh, on the, uh, I'm sorry, Jack? The C E M P plan.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Bob, are you a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Do you need, uh, need a couple, or they already got it?
No, because all you give them is three.
Okay.
Yeah, all I've got is for the.
Unless they pull one out of their manual plan.
Two-page, and you're on the second page, along with the town representatives, that I will.
I can make extra copies if we need to here.
Especially if that's to take it on to the town, too.
I gotta go to Spencer and Gosford, and, uh, but I couldn't do that till I got your approval.
When are you gonna get their approval, Jack?
Just have to see how the meetings fall and, you know.
How's the siren situation going, any?
I've got a, I've got an update on it, but I'm gonna hold out on that till you guys sign this next piece right.
See how this is gonna work.
So when you get all the signatures, what are you gonna do?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll bring you a, a fully signed copy. Thank you guys for that, the next thing I have, uh, involves the hazard mitigation grant that IDH was here, IDHS was here and talked about where they cut us from five sirens to two, uh, part of that process, they sent me three different documents, and one of them, and thank you to Sheila for preparing this document, I, I worked up the body of the letter, and then she done everything else, made it all, all beautiful and, uh, and ready for your signatures, basically what it says is Owen County understands that they're on the hook for twenty-five percent of this grant, and as of right now, that figure is nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, we've, we've discussed this in previous meetings, I've discussed it with the county council, and although that number was a lot larger then, because we thought it was gonna be for five sirens, uh, this is the number, uh, twenty-five percent for two of the sirens, and I will do everything I can to get as many in-kind donations, including, uh, SCI RMC, when they donate polls and all that work, we'll, we'll do all the, the figures to, to make that go towards this match, so I'll make this nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollar number as low as I can possibly get, maybe even cover it all, but I do need your signature for IDHS to move forward with the grant. It's just the, just the president's signature on this document.
Do I hear a motion to approve for the commissioner president to sign the FEMA mitigation letter?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Joel, are you a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
I got that signature page right here, Janet.
Part of that, there is a certification of what place, uh, drug free policy and such, um, and one part where it relates to whether there's been any issues with any of the principles, uh, I, I'll need to write up an explanation of, of that for you to send in with that certification.
Yeah, I see that too. Sheila, do you want?
There's no place for a signature on that.
Going in the basket, so.
Like, just a self-reporting.
It's gotta go back to Jackie.
Jackie has to.
Yeah, you'll, you'll take that to the council.
The next thing I had is an update on the, uh, five sirens that was most recently purchased, the siren at Army has been active up and going for a few weeks, and the difference there is it falls in UDI, uh, RMC, so basically Green County RMC, they had a crew on-site when that siren was put up and hooked it to power, and it, it's been ready since it was installed. The SCI RMC folks do things a little differently, after the sirens are installed, they, uh, the engineering group decides how they're gonna power those up, and, and they pay for everything, including the electricity moving forward, there's, the Owen County has no bill on, on any of these sirens, so, uh, yesterday, they hooked power to the siren at Hollybrook Road and sixty-seven there beside the Carpet Barn, uh, it's, it's active and ready to go, they also hooked up the one on Stone Mountain Road, uh, it, it should reach a lot of people up in that Quincy northeast corner of Owen County, it's at the highest point in Owen County, and there's nothing around to, to stop it, so we, I really expect that siren to perform well, they're both hooked up, ready to go on the system, they've been silently tested, uh, so they're ready. Hickson Hill Road and Jordan Village Road is being hooked up right now, it's, it should be test, silently tested and ready for the noon test on Friday. The siren at State Road forty-six and two forty-six in Vandelia has power hooked to it, but it's got a problem, technicians are working on it, they expect it to be fixed and ready for the noon test on Friday, so I'm not sure, it must come from the factory with some sort of default or some sort of faulty part or something, I, I don't know what's going on with this iron, but it's, it's hooked and it didn't work, so they're, they're fixing it, uh, in the next day or two, so, um, and as far as what happened yesterday morning around seven forty, um, the Rapid Warning system that we purchased, the two encoders for, that the National Weather Service activates those, anytime there's a, a tornado warning issued in Owen County, those, that box activates the sirens, there is no indication that he, I checked with the National Weather Service, I checked with Rapid Warning, there's no indication that that activation come through there, so that only leaves the old spare encoder that we left hooked up, and I don't know, I'm gonna get with Sherry to see if we can, if that EMS channel's recorded, if we can go back and, and look and see if maybe it created some sort of, of an issue that activated that, the sirens, but as of right now, what kind of stuff?
You have any input on that, or?
Um, so, it, the siren activated right, when the technician was out working on one of the sirens and it activated as soon as he plugged it in, so I think it has to do with the old system, like Jack said, somehow a wire got crossed or something, so it's, it's because the old system's still in place, and they're putting in the new system around it.
Okay. Yesterday I asked you, the email, seventeen sirens is what we currently have?
Yes, well, these are fixed and powered up and going, as of noon test on Friday should be seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
My next question, and that's great, I, I'm glad to hear that number, and I'm sure everybody in here is, my next question is, when we test these, Jack, is it like a tree in the woods, if it falls and you're not there, you don't hear, I mean, when you test these and they go off tomorrow or Friday at noon, do we know the one at Q Not's working if nobody's there to hear?
Yes.
Okay, you, you're getting some kind of feedback, says this siren worked?
Yes, every Monday morning at zero eight hundred, these sirens are tested, silent, and they send, uh, data back to Rapid Warning sends it, and then they send me an email that how many sirens were polled, how many sirens went off, and if they had any issues at all, and, uh, every Monday morning I print that out and I put it in a file. And then on Friday, noon test, uh, it'll do the same thing, but we also have amateur radio operators that, we don't have seventeen of them, but we, they try to alternate, and we actually, uh, have guys that are out, eyes and ears on the siren, that report back that they're rotating like they're supposed to, and they're, they're working like that.
I think that's important, that, that we physically go out and make sure that the, you know, not everyone every time, but it'd be nice to have somebody standing there saying, yeah, this thing actually did work.
The amateur radio operators have been, been great to help me out with that, and some of them don't want to go all the way to Kino or all the way to Cold City, but, uh, I do have people in those areas, the, I have phone numbers for them, and I can call and check on them, if the siren went off and if it rotated, lots of times they'll call me if something's, something's not right, doesn't sound right, doesn't sound good. And, and I know this is not quite my time yet, I may not be here at the end of the meeting, um, on Friday I run into a little bit of an issue with a report that had to be done on Friday, uh, at midnight, it needed to be in, uh, IDHS sent me that notification Friday morning, um, so by the time I got it all worked out and realized that I needed Sheila's help, it was about two o'clock in the afternoon, and I said, I hate to do this, but I need something, Sheila pretty much shut down what she was doing and what Matty was doing, they made that absolute priority, and got me everything I needed, and was submitted by about three o'clock, and I think there's too many auditors in state of Indiana that would stop what they're doing in their tracks for their EMA director, and she's awesome, I love her, and I appreciate everything she does, bye.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
We do too.
Back to the, uh, contract with Elavata's, the fee that they would charge is six point five percent of the owner's budget for the cost of work, um, if there are any additional services, uh, those fees are negotiated, uh, the breakdown is the design modification stage, and this is a modification, not a full design, because they already have, uh, a framework, uh, that's fifteen percent of the cost, uh, forty percent in the construction documents, uh, five percent's in the procurement phase, and, uh, forty percent in the construction phase, um, one of the things I had, uh, pointed out to them is they had twenty-four visits for the construction phase, and, uh, I don't think, I did not believe that was sufficient to cover the, the entire, so they're, uh, gonna bump that up to like the new, so, uh, that's one of the main things, but everything else, say, again, that I've talked to them about, they've been very cooperative, um, and the agreement technically is with S Two Architects LLC that is doing business as Elavata's Architecture.
Thank you.
So just, I want to make sure that was on the record.
Thank you, Dan. Do you want to hit those ordinances now, or do you just want to wait until attorney comments?
Um, we, it's just the, uh, one.
Just the one, okay, let's knock it out real quick.
Highway. Um, this is an ordinance establishing the maximum speed limit on Fish Creek Road, Freeman Road, Shepherd Patrick Road and Texas Pike, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Owen County desire to maintain the streets under jurisdiction and control safe and secure from dangerous traffic patterns, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Owen County find this proposed ordinance will promote the health, safety, comfort and general welfare of the citizens of Owen County, whereas Indiana Code nine dash twenty-one dash five dash six allows a county to decrease the speed limit on a street outside of an urban district to not less than thirty miles per hour after performing an engineering and traffic investigation, and whereas the Owen County Highway Department has received complaints regarding excessive speed, uh, deteriorating, uh, roads and/or excessive traffic, and has conducted the required engineering and traffic investigation. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen the following, section one, speed limit established, the maximum speed limit on Fish Creek Road, Freeman Road, Shepherd Patrick Road and Texas Pike shall be thirty-five miles per hour, said roads are located outside of an urban district in Owen County, Indiana. Section two, effective date, the altered speed limit, uh, established by this ordinance is effective at all times when appropriate signs given notice of the altered speed limit are erected on the street as required by Indiana Code nine dash twenty-one dash five dash six C. Uh, section three, penalty, any person violating provisions of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of seventy-five dollars as furthest set forth in Owen County Code, uh, section seventy-one point nine nine C one, uh, which is incorporated by reference. The operator shall be liable for any and all costs incurred by Owen County or prosecution to collect said fine, including but not limited to court costs and attorney's fees. Section four, conflicts with ordinance, this ordinance supersedes all other ordinances or parts of ordinances which are in conflict with its provisions, any such ordinances are hereby repealed, all further or all prior ordinances and resolutions in conflict or inconsistent herewith are hereby expressly repealed. Section five, severability, the various provisions of this ordinance are to be considered severable, and if any or part of, a portion of this ordinance shall be held invalid by any force in conflict jurisdiction, such holding and decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions of this ordinance, which shall remain in full force of effect, passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County, State of Indiana, in a regular meeting held on June fifth of, or fifth day of June twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Dan. Got them all covered for you, didn't it Greg? Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four zero one three, an ordinance establishing the maximum speed limit on Fish Creek Road, Freeman Road, Shepherd Patrick Road and Texas Pike, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm having that order just written up, twenty twenty-four dash zero one three.
Have a motion by Bob, go here, second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Greg and I have been in some discussion about doing something more county-wide, uh, to try to, uh, cover as much roads as possible, and so we're looking into. try to cover as much roads as possible, and so we're looking into that as well.
Thank you. Yeah, do a one ordinance sweep, feel a little easier. Okay, Sherri, next time you come to a meeting, tell Sheila you want to be first, because every time you've been to a meeting, you've been like the end of the-
That's all right. So, I'm here today to give some updates about the radio project, and then hopefully have some decisions made, so I can talk to town council Monday night. I mean, I'm sorry, county council Monday night. First off, the Barry Ritter contract, this was a contract that was signed by y'all in, I believe, February. I started in March, as you know. I looked over the contract and confidently feel that I could do most of the things in that contract and potentially save the county about fifty-five thousand dollars. I kept all y'all up to speed on where we're at with that. I just need to know if we are indeed going to back out of that contract now, which we can because of an incorrect date that they listed on there. I had reached out to Barry to discuss some changes. He came back and added a lot more cost to the project, so I feel it's in our best interest at this point to completely cancel that and just move forward.
And I'm fine with that, as long as the attorney has no issues with that contract and we can back out without expense?
I have no issue with it. The, one of the main principles of contracts is that there's a meeting of the minds, meaning that both parties know exactly what it is that they're doing for one another, compensation versus work, and there was not a meeting of the minds. It's obvious from that, from the second contract that he sent. So it's obvious that that did not happen, so therefore, I feel that there'd be no issues with rescinding that contract.
With that being said, I'm gonna ask for a motion to rescind the contract with Barry Ritter for the nine one one communications center. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Joel, go here, second.
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that, Sherri.
And Dana, will that be something that you would like to prepare?
Yeah, I will give the notice.
Okay, great. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to move forward with the vendor request for proposal. I've sent that request, I've already written it and sent it to you for approval. I would like to be able to send that out to the vendors, prospective vendors, probably today, if you approve that.
This is for the actual tower project?
The tower, the radio project, yes.
Right. And I'm absolutely fine with that, but we have a process that the state and federal government has set up with ARPA funds. The proposals come to the commissioners, we gave that money to the county council. The county council is going to have to physically come to, or she can do it today if her board's okay with it, and give us that proposal and say, hey, the county council wants to spend this money on this project, here's what it is. We can approve it, literally, it goes back to the council. I know this is a crazy process, but it's federal government money. So, I'm all for it, but we have a process we have to do, and we've done it with every ARPA project that we've had. The proposal comes to the commissioners, or we have came with a proposal, it goes back to the council, and then we can move forward. So, I'm fine with it. Polly, how do you want to handle it? Do you want to take it to your meeting? Or, I know you guys have already talked about the radio project and using that money that we moved to you.
I would kind of like to see what you guys are looking at, so we can sort of be brought up to see.
There's no totals on anything that I'm looking at, it's just information, because you're gonna put it out for bid, so we don't know the dollar amount.
Yes, correct, so we don't know any dollar amounts yet. So, this is just a proposal to send to the vendors.
We'll go ahead and do that today, but we'll have to make sure that we do that the proper way, because otherwise, we're gonna get audited and they're gonna say, hey, you didn't do this properly.
So what do you mean?
Just, once we get back the numbers, and she has to report companies, then we'll go to do that. Or if you want to do it ahead of time, saying, hey, we're gonna spend this three hundred thousand dollars for the radio project with ARPA funds, then we can okay your proposal.
So the council already approved that amount of monies at their last meeting that you guys had given to them to use for projects. That portion that they were given, and I don't know that it was an exact amount, I think it was three hundred and forty-two thousand, something like that. The council has already approved that to go toward radio projects. So do you still want them to bring it back to the commissioners?
Polly's here today, I mean, she's the president. If that's been done, all she's gotta do is tell us that that's what they're gonna do, we'll go ahead and vote on it and move forward. This is important money to be spent for a very important project.
So is this a, just to send out proposals?
Correct.
Yeah.
Just to solicit proposals?
But we're trying to kill two birds with one stone, if that's possible. That way we don't have to come back, the council doesn't have to come back and say, hey, here's our ARPA proposal.
Because I think there was also, I was thinking it was a five hundred thousand, estimated five hundred thousand dollar project, so they knew that there was still gonna have to possibly be other funds that would have to be appropriated as well, but did commit to that ARPA.
All we have to deal with is the ARPA amount, the dollar amount. So, if you're good with that proposal, you're presenting-
Yeah, well, that's what the council would-
And I've said in that meeting, I remember the conversation, it's just, okay, so we'll make this, let's take care of that first, okay? Do I hear a motion to approve the council's proposal for the additional ARPA funds to be spent on the radio project?
I will make that motion.
I have a motion by Joel, go here, second.
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
That's done. Now we can move forward.
Okay, so I would like to then send out these requests for proposals to the vendors with a due date of June twenty-fourth, for them to get these proposals back to me, and then on the twenty-sixth, June twenty-sixth, we're gonna have an open meeting, anyone's welcome to attend, where the vendors actually present their proposals to a committee. And I've set up the committee, it involves fire chiefs, Chris, and myself, because we're gonna be the ones using the frequency the most. I spent most of Friday visiting the four different tower sites, plus Rocky Hill, and several of the tower sites need extensive construction work as far as the buildings that house the actual radio equipment. One is the Freedom Site. It's a dilapidated building with a gravel floor, and we've got expensive equipment in there. It's got a mice problem, to where one of the water department employees built this makeshift cover for the radios and put a screen across the front so the mice couldn't get in. So we're gonna, so that's just the Freedom Site. Then I went to Rocky Hill, where currently, we don't have any fire frequencies or equipment there. There's some equipment there, but it's not hooked up, it's like backup equipment. But that's where the sheriff digital radios are, that's where the highway digital radios are, there's some ham radio equipment there. There's extensive water damage, water intrusion into the building that at one point-
Is that still coming in? We repaired that roof back, I want to say, last fall. Steve was out there, did quite a bit of work to that roof.
I mean, I didn't see any standing water, but you can see the ceiling tiles.
I think that that's previous.
Okay.
And Chad's telling me that is-
The roof was fixed, and the ceiling tiles and the floor has never been fixed.
The floor is spongy?
And the problem with that is, we have one maintenance guy, so he needs two or three other hands to get some of this stuff done, so we may have to hire it out. But the roof part has been taken care of. And I agree with everything you're saying, Sherri, this stuff needs to be dealt with, fixed immediately. If you'll get that list, any of those type of things, we'll get to Steve, the maintenance, just send him an email, tell him the problems. If you have to go out with him, you're more than welcome to. And if we need to hire outside contract, we can do that through CUMCAT. Or if we don't have the money, we'll go back to the council, I know that's important to the county. So, you know, the money will come from somewhere.
Would it be a possibility that with the fifty-five thousand, that we just save the county, I could take, I get some quotes and potentially get these buildings repaired before we move all this really expensive-
Absolutely.
-equipment in? Okay.
You'll just have to do a transfer of funds within your own department. Am I correct saying that, Sheila? You can go to maintenance, move it out of wherever it was at, over to a maintenance line in your department?
Well, I don't believe the fifty-five was coming out of my-
That was ARPA funds.
That was ARPA.
That was, it was ARPA funds. So, yes.
Okay. And I'll just solicit, I'll just get quotes, and then y'all can make a decision.
Yeah. We'll have to change that ARPA proposal, which we did that in, in here on our board, so we'll just change it to maintenance of the towers. How's that?
Okay, great. So was there any other questions regarding the radio project itself? I'm kind of hitting the ground running with this, because I would like to see the entire system installed and in place by potentially late fall.
It's been a long time coming problem, so yeah, no, if it happened tomorrow would be great.
Okay, great.
Commissioners, I would recommend a vote on allowing her to send out the request for proposals for that, and as well, if you're converting the ARPA funds from the Barry Ritter contract to maintenance, have a vote on that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Dana. I will ask for a motion for approval of submitting bids for the radio project, for the nine one one director to put those out. I am gonna make a comment that roughly a total of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is appropriated for, with ARPA funds, and the ballots will be taken care of through county council. I think that's a proper motion, that covers everything for any additional that comes in on those bids.
Okay.
With that motion, I'm making that motion, go here, second.
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, ask for a motion to remove the ARPA proposal of fifty-five thousand for the Barry Ritter contract to be moved to radio tower maintenance, facility maintenance.
I'll second that.
You got a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a couple real quick things. I've been drafting my budget for next year, and I do appreciate the opportunity to approach county council and town council to discuss several proposals I have for my budget. And I guess, with the way things rolling, I need to get permission from you guys to talk to county council, and then county council to talk to town council. Okay.
That is correct, and Sherri, you may already have this in that figure, you and I talked a little bit about the town of Spencer's not putting anything into our nine one one dispatch at all. I've been told maybe some, several years ago, that might have happened, and something happened, it fell off the wagon, and they take advantage of our nine one one or our PSAP tax, that they collect several thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I think it's important, and you probably have already done this, that we get something back from the town of Spencer to support that.
Yes, that's what I'm gonna ask for. So since two thousand and eighteen, we've handled just for the town of Spencer about, just shy of twenty-two thousand calls for service. I printed those out yesterday, and they're in a, they fill a three-inch binder, it's almost five hundred pages. So it is, they need to, they need to start paying for dispatch services.
Twenty-two hundred people, six years, twenty-one thousand calls. That's amazing.
So, yeah, that's the proposal. I'd like to go ask, you know, and see what their response is. I've talked to surrounding counties, who, their dispatch centers dispatch for multiple agencies and departments, and they all pay, they pay for those services.
Yeah, and I know Polly's in favor of this, her and I've spoke about this as well. Absolutely.
Okay. Great. So, my last order of business, I would like to recognize one of my dispatchers who just has really impressed me over the last couple months that I've been here. She's nineteen years old, and she's been on the job six months, and in April, she took a call from a nine one one caller who was, who said that he wanted to commit suicide. And he, he had weapons with him, and he was in a really remote area of the county, and it took units about thirty minutes to get on scene, and, and she just handled the call perfectly. And, and for those of you that don't know, when you're talking to somebody who is potentially suicidal, it's very stressful, because you don't know if the next thing you're gonna say is gonna trigger them. And so, it's a, it's a very, very delicate conversation you need to have with them. So, she just did an outstanding job, and so I'd like to present Brianna with that certificate that I gave you.
Thank you. Brown, we do have a certificate for you from the Board of Commissioners and nine one one. We thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. All right. Folks, we had a lot of stuff on the agenda, I know it's a long meeting.
Good morning, commissioners. I've got several little things, and I'll try to run through them quick, because we had CCMG bid openings today. You mentioned earlier, I'd like to report that our annual operations report has been submitted to LTAP, approved. The highway department is in compliance. Thank you to Sheila, Kelly in that office. But, all is well. Equipment is hard to get and take a while, commissioners, so I'd like you to start thinking, and we need to put some feelers out, our grader leases will have a one year out in July. Takes a long time to get equipment now. I'd like to be thinking about the graders. I would suggest that we do, as we did the last time that we leased, we purchased a grader outright, we went shopping. I'd like to go shopping for a grader and just commit to one grader on lease this time. And I would, I know we have to shop around, they are Sourcewell leases, but I think John Deere has a cheaper lease. We can lease a smaller grader, which is more conducive to our type of work. You can only lease the large grader from Caterpillar, so I think that's the way we need to go, we need to start working on that most immediately.
I'd definitely like to see you go out and try to purchase another one, so we can dump some of this lease money that we're throwing away. Yeah. You guys don't have any objections to that?
No, I'll actually make a motion to allow Greg to start searching for a-
Yeah, to purchase a-
Purchase a motor grader.
And I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you hear that motion, Sheila?
Okay.
You kind of jumped out there.
Commissioners, that, that would be out of next year's budget, but I would also suggest that that grader be a used one. There's no sense in spending that touch of money on a new machine.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Burton is aware, but Southeastern will be at, the highway department at eleven o'clock today, they're providing lunch to everyone, they're one of our vendors, they allowed us to use a loader, a Devalon loader, at no charge for thirty days while we were working our pub mill project. It's a new line of equipment they've got. Anyway, they will be there with some of the representatives from Devalon today, they'll be providing lunch. Commissioners, Sheila, Polly, you're invited if you want to come out. They'll be there at eleven o'clock. Freeman Road project is going extremely well. I've had a man with EMB, EMB people the entire time. Everybody has worked very well together, and very happy of how things are going. I've spoke with Garrett Goff this morning for B and B, and if everything works good today, we think the asphalt will be late. Just have to see how things go, if the weather cooperates.
I was out there Monday, it looks very good.
I was out there last night, it looked good.
And while we're on that subject, real quick, I want to apologize to Garrett for our county individual that lashed out at one of your employees for trying to do a job to benefit the county, so.
It happens.
I'm sure it does, but it just, it's not necessary.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, very inappropriate.
Yeah.
Our paper is on its way back home as we speak. It was picked up at Caterpillar today. We're taking it right straight to Marley Road, that's where we're going to start.
We're taking it right straight to Marley Road, that's where we're going to start lane asphalt, that's just going to take, our start lane cold mix, that's just going to take one move out of the equation, so we hope to lay Marley Road next week with a permitting. I have Donnie from VOMAC here today, I asked him to come in regard to report on a dump truck that we made a purchase on back before the first year because we needed to plow stone and it's still not in our possession. It is an upfitters, but he is here today to report that progress to the commission.
And Greg, that being said, we purchased a used truck to fill that void. That's correct.
Absolutely.
Good morning.
Morning Don.
Yeah, sure, no, I talked to Ron Equipment yesterday, the gentleman, Tim Waterman, Chad and Greg and I, we're working with him. I got an email, well actually a text message that I turned into an email to myself, but he, then the tech, he said, hey, bed is here, file is a week or so out from order, we have three weeks left on current project, expect to be able to start in three or four weeks, three or four weeks to finish. Best guess, no promises, end of July, is what they're telling me right now at this point. That is from Jeff Coleman, who's the shop foreman slash for Ron Equipment and Dan Littleman. Greg called me, just like Chad has, they have absolutely been on top of it every week, every day. Wanted to know because obviously these guys need trucks to fulfill, taxpayers pay for roads and he clears safe roads and everything like that. On, on top of VOMAC, I deeply apologize, you know, Dan, we're doing everything we can to stay on top of it. I was telling Chad in the meeting right now, for four plan on that truck alone, that truck was put on their lot December the 12th and from today with my general manager Chad Harrow, so four plan interest we have paid on the truck have been $6,211. So as much as it is a pain to you, 100% because we are service of work provided for you, it gets into our pockets deeply and we are just as much concerned as what you are. So with that being said, that is the recent update I got from Jeff Coleman as of this week.
So you're going to promise us we'll have that before it snows?
If it is not, we will build it one ASAP. I, I will, I will put everything on it that we will get that done, I promise you. The oil truck might be done before it-
I hope that doesn't happen, but-
No, no.
Not that we don't need that truck as well, but-
Correct, yes sir.
That truck still scheduled for next year?
That truck is actually going to be in, it is off the line from MAC, June 22nd this month and then it will be delivered to us. We PDI, which is a pre-delivery inspection. Greg and Chad will come up, look the truck over, at that point we'll transport it over to Oregon, Illinois for Ed and I are for them to install their equipment on top of it. At that point, them two gentlemen, the way I understand it, they bring it down, they go through everything with your employees, check it over, run it, make sure they're fine. If there's anything on the structure of the cabin chassis, that is our responsibility, we will take care of it. But in that thing, we also did a warranty, me and Greg and Chad Walker talked about, we did five, we did so many years, so we did seven year 250 warranty on the after treatment system, the engine. Because at the end of the day at the county, I'm not trying to mean you guys don't put a lot of miles on your equipment because you're just obviously down through county roads. We wanted, like them gentlemen wanted, I don't need five year 500,000, I need more years to cover this engine. So they did seven year 250,000 mile warranty on that truck, which covers it, which is an absolute game changer when it comes to cost. If they were to come in and the EGR valve on the truck goes up, I can tell you right now firsthand, that's a $5,000 fix out of our shop. If you turned around with the warranty that you gentlemen paid for that is included in the truck price, it was actually $2,363. So you can see how it is absolutely a no brainer. I'm not going to lie to you, we will have a check engine light that comes on this truck, we will take care of you. But I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's going to be, you know, rainbow and glitz all the time, but it will be taken care of.
Again, that truck, that distributor truck isn't our 2025 budget.
That is correct.
Okay. Alright, so he promises truck before it snows and distributor truck's going to be here on time? Alright, we still like you Don.
Okay, I appreciate it sir, very much sir, I appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
No, I appreciate you guys a lot, thank you so much.
I got a question Greg, concerning distributor truck, what are we going to do this year? If I missed it, I apologize.
No, you have not missed that, I was going to report in regard to dust control. Two things, when we prepare chip and seal, we have arrangements with Asphalt Solutions to rent a distributor truck for a specific period of time. Unfortunately gentlemen, that's August when we're going to do our ship seal project, so that's going to hinder dust control. Now, we have had some calcium chloride donated to us, commission is aware of that for about $1,400. My mechanics have adapted an agricultural sprayer to spray calcium chloride.
So you're going to use a water truck?
We used a sprayer, an agricultural sprayer itself. We, that way we not going to lose and have corrosion on that specific truck. We got them extremely worried about, worried about the corrosion. So we took an agricultural sprayer with a 500 gallon tank, we've cut the booms down, replaced the pump that runs off hydraulics with a stainless steel trash pump from Harbor Freight. We can pull it with a pickup truck, we can pull it with one of our tractors, but we can pump into that and use calcium chloride and hopefully working with one of our vendors for a truck sprayer on equipment and Harbor Freight will have less than $1,400 in this machine and labor. And if you're out today, you can take a look at it, but it, it'll be up and ready to go by next week.
Awesome. I might be able to help you with some additional calcium chloride from some other places, free as well, let me know how your supply holds up.
The other thing in regard to dust, dust control gentlemen, we're trying to avoid it at all costs because of the hole in the tank, but if we have to, we can try to resurrect the old distributor truck that we have. As long as we can get hot material when it comes in, we may be able to use that, but we cannot fire the burners. We do, we start a fire, so I mean it's a possibility.
You've got a distributor truck taken care of or rented for your cold mix projects and your asphalt projects.
I do.
Yeah, okay.
But it, it's not in my possession all the time, because when it comes, it's a rental, but it comes with its driver.
But having said you've got this ag sprayer set up, we can, we can dust control with calcium chloride.
That is correct. That was our original plan, but I had to-
The option was get the old truck running.
I had to report to you guys that, you know, it's in short supply right now through our distributors, so in the bulk form that we were going to purchase it. But we can buy it, we can mix it, we just don't know, we have to learn all of that as we go, but we're going to be able to-
I'll help you on all that stuff.
Do that process.
Put some tires on that and that loaded, so they can have that.
There you go.
Our pickup trucks that were ordered were sent to the same upfitter that our dump truck was sent to. It's been several weeks, but I am pleased to report that they will be on site to add to the light fleet this afternoon.
Awesome.
I, for the other two commissioners, I spoke with Commissioner Burton. We had a situation arrive on Hayden Road in regard to culvert failure. It has been an ongoing situation since I've been highway superintendent, not necessarily because of the culvert, but because of the pond that was built right up next to the road and has caused the road to be soft in that area. There was guard rail there, it has sloughed off, cable has been used. The pipe that went from one side of the road to the other has failed. I did ask for quotes from local contractors, we are extremely busy right now prepping the CCMG roads and things that we already have on the books because the utilities, it's a pretty serious job. So I asked two different local contractors for quotes so we could try to get something done quickly. We do have money in bridge, we're getting ready to get a settlement that if commission decides to approve, I would just have to go, I could pay for it, but would have to go back to the council before end of the year to ask for replacement money out of my cash balance in the bridge and culverts to pay for a bridge through CLR later in the year.
I was going to say, we already got commitments on that bridge money, so. Paul, since you're sitting out there, just so you're aware, out on Hayden Road, we've got a situation where we've got a pond that's on both sides of the road, there's guard rail, the pipes failed. Basically we're going to bring contractor in to build dams on both sides to keep the water back while it's being worked on. Not something that's near, remotely in the budget of the county highway department, so Greg's going to be coming to you to talk about this situation once we figure out what these quotes are, but it's going to be crucial, otherwise that road's going to end up getting shut down and that's a major thoroughfare back through there, so.
Can I answer, can I ask you a question Greg?
Yes.
On Hayden Road, what's your easement?
20 feet from the center of the road.
And does the road lie 20 feet wide or 10 feet wide per center of the road?
If you're asking me if that pond's in our right of way, it is.
Okay, so, so there's someone else involved?
That is correct.
Well, I think the hard question needs to be asked. You can't build a house, you can't put a pond on an easement of a road.
Well, unfortunately gentlemen, this pond has been there some 40 years, the best that I can figure out.
We didn't do anything about it when it was built, it's the problem Joel.
Now, we have a similar situation on White Road, but we have tried to address that since that has occurred. So I believe that there will be standing on the White Road situation when it, when it comes time, because that had a reconstruction of a dam which a pond had been dry for several years, a year ago, and we have talked about this in the open meeting, but this pond's been there, I, I believe 40 plus years.
Just a question.
I agree with you. Pardon, I said a good question, but it stinks because they should have done something about it before it happened. Well, before our time.
How many quotes did you ask for?
I was only able to get two.
Did you ask?
I had, I put it out and I asked for a minute, I could get it, but I actually had two come in.
Alright, the first quote is from Fender Excavating, project in Hayden Road, edge of road slipping off and culvert is bad, full part of guard rail, building edge of road, replace culvert to a bigger, bigger wind rip ramp, lower bend, the guardrail backed up, take down inlet 12 and put back after all the replacement. County provides materials, their work would be $19,000. Again, that's Fender Excavating, see. Second is from Voice Excavating, see, and it is removal of guard rail, we have to remove blacktop as necessary for the job, remove culvert pipe and install new wind with global fill and soft footer and repaying wall block to ensure widened area, roadway is secure, roadway work widening will take place mostly on the north side of Hayden Road, slopes will be finished with rip ramp. This bid is for labor only, 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 the county department will provide all materials, trucking and rebuild white top road as needed. And their estimate is $20,400.
Thank you Dana. Any discussion gentlemen? Motion to approve Fender excavating at $19,000 on the Hayden Road project, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you commissioners, again, we have money in favor of this, I just may have to go back and ask for appropriation out of my cash balance. Okay, we're ready for CCMG bids.
Okay. We have two bids. The bid deadline is June 5th, today at 9:00 AM and both bids were, before that, the first bid received is from Milestone for the crossing grant for 2024. The bid is for $1,495,528.45 cents for the work that was bid out.
Give me that one more time Dana.
And that's you?
And that is from Milestone. Of course we need to go through your bid to make sure everything's in there, but we double it before, so I won't worry. The second bid is from E&amp;B Paving. And the proposal from E&amp;B Paving is for $1,593,593.00. Anything else you need?
No, I would just, I'd like, this is a meeting's out, but I'd like to look at it and make sure the thing is in order, so I'd like a minute to go outside and-
You have anything else on your-
The only other thing commissioners I have is there, we did get the full $1.5 million via community crossing because we were cautious not to go over the amount. The 2024 call is July 15th, I do believe with the thirty some thousand I have with our portion of the match grant, a project that I've brought before you many a times, it's been approved, but we could never come up with the money. At the time is the baseline road intersection upgrade and repair, that's a site of some serious crashes, fatal crashes, and I do believe that we have money that fits that project. I would ask for your permission to submit that via the 2024 to community crossing. And the only other thing I'd have to do is I would have to get with United Consulting, they've updated it once for me, but have their engineering updated one more time prior to July 15th.
Yeah, we've had some tests there at that location.
Yes, and this commission has approved, but we've never had the extra money, I believe that there's enough there to cover the cost now for option two.
Gotcha. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the baseline road project for the second round of community crossings, which is roughly $30,000 to be approved for that project, or submitted for that project, we'll put it that way. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Get you back in here in a few minutes, please attention, let's get you up here.
Good morning, my name's James Zar, I'm the extension director at the extension office and it was, our phone system was installed in 2004 and so we're having a lot of chronic problems with it. The, had a, we just get these random drop calls, clients will call the office- The, I had a, we just get these random drop calls, clients will call the office, and one of us will be talking on the phone with them, and it's not their cell phone dropping, it's our end that we've determined, and the contractor with Highcom, Derek, he took a look at it with me, and in terms of the system we have, and also our voicemail has not worked, I don't know how long it's not worked, it wasn't working when I started in December, and so I don't know how long that goes back as far as, so if somebody wants to call after hours, they can't leave a message, and so I'm really trying to improve our customer service, I think that's, you know, one of the biggest jobs I've seen with the extension office, is just reaching out to clients and being, being there for clients and being responsive, and so I can't seem to get the phone system fixed. Highcom said that they can't repair it, the equipment's twenty years old, and they don't even have, know where to start with it, so.
Right.
I did get a quote from Derek, it's a little over five thousand dollars to replace the system. I tried to secure another quote, House of Phones really wasn't interested, I didn't even get back to me, I had to call them back another time.
We use Highcom in the county for, for service anyway.
And I did ask Derek about, I said, "What's the bare bones that I could go as far as expenditure?", and he said, "Well, you could go with", and this was just a conversation I had yesterday with him, he said, "You could go with system, cloud-based system", I don't understand the details, but he said it would be a little cheaper, but the cloud storage fees would basically ratchet it back up to your existing bid that proposed. And so he said, "I don't think you want to go that direction", and he said, "It's not better service, it's not that it's any better, it's just a different format with some less infrastructure up front", but he said the fees will be, basically puts you right back at the same dollar level, so.
My concern, and I don't have concern with replacing the phone system, don't get me wrong, I have done it all, I've been dealing with this quite a bit throughout the county, as they deal with copper lines, we are forced to go with fiber phone system. Is that in consideration here, or is this just in-house phones, not dealing with any of the lines or any of those type of things, because it's coming? I've talked to AT&amp;T, I've talked to RMC, I've talked to Smithville Telephone, and if any of our residents out there have been forced to change, you've got a letter saying, "Here's your options", and there are no options, copper lines are going away. So is that in this discussion? Because this phone system needs to be adapted to whatever it is that we've got coming down the road, I don't know if Derek's, I'm sure he has, but I don't know if you guys had that discussion.
He did not have that conversation directly with me about, from the office out, it was just simply the, the system inside the office.
Okay.
So I would need to follow up with that.
As long as it's compatible with whatever we have to change to, if that makes any sense, that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, and it makes, it's just like the jail hat on, is that you don't, you don't want to spend money and then...
Find out it's not gonna work.
Yeah, and find out.
And I've talked, for our purposes, gentlemen, I've talked to IT, and when we go to fiber, we're not stuck like we are with AT&amp;T phone, or whatever, we can go with whatever company provides the best, and I'm told that Smithville is going to provide us the best fiber service for phones across the board. They tell me AT&amp;T is horrible, and I have to listen to these guys, because they know a whole lot more about that stuff than, than I do. So, anyway, that's coming down the road, I have no problem with this, I would suggest that you get with Derek and make sure that it's compatible with any changes that's coming down the road, because it's coming.
I can do that immediately.
Yeah. We have a Highcom, we have a phone budget in our IT, but it's for maintenance and repair throughout the year, and it's twenty-five hundred dollars is all that's in there, and they come out and fix a, a phone line, or, or whatever kind of issue we have. So I'm assuming you don't have this in your budget, or you wouldn't be here before us today.
I don't have any repair budget, or even do equipment, or...
So I guess in our conversation, if it's compatible with whatever changes coming down the road, we could go ahead and approve it for him to take it to council and find out, you know, where they can fund it. Anybody want to make a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to allow him to, to proceed forth with this, ensuring that it is compatible with fiber optic in the future, and proceed with this.
Okay. Got a motion by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
So you need to do now is go to the council meeting on the...
I'll check with Derek on that.
Yeah.
And I think, Steve, we're on the docket for Monday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just for the record, the total of AIP office investment would be five thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I'm sorry, yes, I got it right in front of me. Thank you. That was in your motion, wasn't it, Joel?
It was.
Okay, elected, Greg, I'm sorry, you're back.
Commissioners, we've looked through these, I've worked with both of these companies, both of them do very good work. I would just suggest that you go with the lowest bid.
Thank you. And thanks both companies for doing the work on it. Do I hear a motion to approve the low bid for community crossings at one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars?
Who's that company?
Milestone.
Milestone. I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, commissioners, again, all of you, if you get a chance, come out.
You better hurry.
Yeah, I'm late.
You're gonna be late.
Hey, no, we can chat.
Okay, we're down to elected officials in the department heads, Bernard, I knew you had, you can't get through a meeting without having something to say. What have you got for us today?
Oh, it's real quick and simple, because I've, I've been pursuing one fifty-six, the ordinance thing, and talking to a lot of people about the remedies, and ways to be able to do things to make it work. I see a lot of problems with the local officials when they come out, but right now, what I want to do is ask the county commissioners and request that they initiate a line item in the budget for the building department, since there are going to be a ramrod deal running this thing, that they have a budget thing, a line in there, where the county can put up, you know, it's gonna cost seven hundred thousand dollars, but to put it in that line item to pay for some of these cleanups, and the reason why I ask this is because I talked to three different firms now, when it comes to cleaning up property, it's got engines and transmission oils, hydraulic fluid, you know, and all other nasty things you can think of, plus the diseases and everything that are there, and the prices, I haven't been able to concrete yet, because I don't know what the situation, but it seems like that, that the fees that we're going to get for cleaning up a piece of property are going to fall far short of what the actual cleanup cost is gonna be.
Not unless we get the residents to clean them up themselves by being fined.
I don't have faith in them at all, but the thing about it is that we need to have a budget item to work, you know, this one-third acre is gonna cost eighteen thousand dollars to clean up, and people don't know, they don't, they give it to you, they don't, you know, they're done, they're done, they're not gonna do anything. So if the taxpayers are gonna have to pay for it, then we have to have a slot somewhere where we can take money out.
It'd have to be anyway.
Yeah.
Automatic.
I'm requesting that the county commissioners look at the idea of a line item for the cleanup costs under this, for this, that's about our question.
Okay. Pretty much automatic anyway, Sheila, if it happens, right? Okay, anybody else? Auditor's comments?
I sent you the Epic Insurance, we went through, we had our audit done, and we got a nine hundred and forty-five dollar refund. We're still working on a vehicle list, I think we've pretty much narrowed it down to if all of them that we have that are on our current inventory are paying for, so that's a plus. Sent you a thing, we got email, there's additional opioid monies that will be coming down the pipe, and Dana will handle that when we get there, when we, there'll be more information that comes in, but I've heard it's a pretty substantial amount that will be coming in more than what we had received the first time around, so.
I heard this morning that the Walmart finally made a settlement as well, so that was Kroger's there.
That's Kroger.
So Walmart's coming, so I think that was about one point two billion dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
Kroger.
Yeah. We could sure use that money for a lot of different things. Anything else, Sheila? No? Dana?
Just a few things working on, there's concerns that Greg had about his people with people going around barriers when roads are closed, or, you know, when work's being done, so I'm working on the ordinance to have some teeth in it to, to help protect those, those workers. Also, the treasurer asked me to help with changing the innkeeper's tax from being collected by the county to put that to being collected by the state, I have prepared that ordinance and looked over the agreement with Department of Revenue, and so now Shelley's looking through it to make sure that, you know, she's, it all fits her needs, and then some of that'll, that'll be coming down the pipe, but that would be an ordinance by the council as it relates to taxes, but the agreement, confidentiality agreement with Department of Revenue would be with the, well, it's with the treasurer, but the treasurer designates people in her office that are employees of the county, and so, you know, we would need to make sure that the county approves of that as well, which it looks good, so that, that's about all I have.
Awesome, I know you're working on some other stuff as well.
Oh, yeah.
Speaking of the highway and people driving around construction sites and so on and so forth, Endot had a grant meeting, Greg had some of his staff attended, there's fifty million dollars available for safety through county highway garages, so that is in the process of learning that, trying to get some of that money, so we could get flashing message signs, we can do a lot with that, and we need it, we have more signs stolen per year than we put out, we can't keep up with it, so, anyway, that, that will help, and hopefully some of that grant money will be able to come back into the county. So, Joel?
Yeah, I want to speak to the YouTube viewing public, not necessarily those of you in the room. It came to my attention yesterday that the highway departments had some, had some situations out while working the roads. I want to reiterate to people that we're using taxpayers' money to improve your roads. They're not there to inconvenience you, they're there to do their job. There's many other avenues to get around this county, and as far as I'm concerned, badgering county highway workers, endangering their lives, will be held, they will be held accountable in some form or fashion, I'll guarantee it. We got a lot of hard workers out there, we're spending a lot of big taxpayer dollars, and it's ridiculous for anybody to badger a highway worker, one of our contract workers, and just to be a common nuisance. So I hope people heed the warning, because law enforcement can get involved, and it's, it's ridiculous, people, all we do is get complaints, commissioners, concerning the conditions of our roads, but yet when we try to repair those roads, we receive nothing but flack for it. So there's plenty of avenues that can be taken, they can be held accountable, and I hope that Dana does work on an ordinance with teeth in it, that, that even, that even speaks more volume. Let our people do their work.
I agree with you, Joel, a hundred percent.
It's, it's ridiculous.
When I got that message yesterday, I was pretty fired up.
We, we received a message to all three commissioners concerning an incident on Freedom and Road, I'm not gonna mention names, terrible scenario, pathetic. I hope that person's watching, they ought to be ashamed.
Bob?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep, both said it, it's been done.
I don't think I have anything else, pretty much discussed all the jail issues. Sheila, am I forgetting anything that we've discussed throughout the week, or...
No, I would like to back up, we're going to the council Monday night, we will be sending out everybody, all department budgets for twenty twenty-five forms to fill in, we're gonna request, they'll be back by the end of June, so that we can give them to the council at their first meeting, that gives them almost six weeks to look at them before the actual budget hearing is the last of August, so I will prepare your notices, because you'll need to make a motion to, to them to the council, so as long as you do it, it your June nineteenth, your July third meeting, you have time to get it to them, but you'll have all your individual departments, as well as your commissioner budget, you'll have to be due if you want to get started, but we will have all of those forms to all the departments on Tuesday.
You're gonna do those this year, aren't you?
Yeah. Got it, bud.
I, I have one question here, I've got something in front of me that looks like it was through the federal emergency management.
Yes, that's the certification that we talked about with Jack White.
So, is this the one?
Letter, letter.
Okay.
Yeah, I just need to attach a letter of explanation to it, that's a...
I didn't want to move to my completed pile until I discussed it. Nothing else said, the motion adjourned?
I make a motion adjourned.
Got a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, gentlemen, I got a ton of out of cycles here, so, thank you, everyone, have a great day.